Okay, so we're all set. All right, thank you. Okay, I'd like to welcome everyone to the Town and District Unit Planning Board and Zoning Commission meeting of April 29th, 2024. Ms. Bergama, would you please call the roll?
Mr. Laflamme.
Here.
Ms. Strain.
Here.
Mr. Khan.
Here.
Mr. Darpino.
Here.
Ms. Gold.
Present.
Ms. Gomes.
Here.
Chairman Walsh.
Here. Thank you. Okay, first up is the approval of the minutes from the April 15th, 2024 meeting. And I have a motion to approve those minutes.
So move.
Moved by Mr. Darpino, can I have a second?
A second.
Seconded by Mr. Laflamme. Is there any corrections or changes to the minutes? Just to let you know, I wasn't present for that meeting, so I'm going to abstain from those minutes.
There was just, and Laura and I already spoke about it, she has me on, well, that's this meeting as opposed to the last meeting. I'm sorry, I take that back.
It's an agenda statement.
Okay, great, okay.
Yeah, minutes from the last meeting.
I had one typo on page nine, line 373. A step slope should be steep slope double E.
Okay, trying to scroll through. So it's just a spelling correction, or, I'm sorry, line what?
373.
Okay. Okay, steep slope, okay. I mean, that's a minor change, I think we're okay, we're just taking care of that, all right? Is there any other corrections or changes to the minutes? Okay, all those in favor of approval of the minutes with the minor correction on line 373, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And I'm going to abstain on that. And the minutes are approved from April 15th. We have no public hearings tonight, so we'll move the privilege of the floor. Anyone wishing to be heard regarding any planning and zoning matters in the Town and District Unit, please come to the microphone, state your name and address for the record, and we'll listen to what you have to say. So, privilege of the floor is open for anyone.
My name is Marion Jackson, I live at 940 Inman Road, and I'm here because I was alerted that the planning board meeting would be discussing future plans for legislation regarded, related to the short-term rentals. We had an incident, again, on Saturday night at Milton Keynes, and we did call the police, and the Airbnb was alerted that there was a lot of commotion there. And I'm waiting for you to make a decision about what you're going to do, so we aren't confronted about this all summer. The property is rented out for, I believe, 16 weekends, and we're very concerned that we haven't really heard anything as far as what your committee is going to be doing about it, and what your position is. Is there a level of discussion about this?
It's on the agenda for tonight, and we'll be talking about it later tonight, unfortunately.
I'm new to this.
Yep. The agendas are always posted, and it's, you know, something we've been talking about. It's going to take some time, but we'll be talking about it later tonight.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. Privilege of the floor, anyone else? Okay, do we have anybody online, Laura, or do we have any communications, emails, et cetera?
I didn't get any emails. There is one person online that I don't recognize, so I'm just going to ask, is there anyone online that wanted to speak under privilege of the floor?
All right. Hearing or seeing no one else for privilege of the floor, we'll close privilege of the floor. We'll move on to unfinished business. We have no unfinished business, so we'll go to new business. We have several resolutions for tonight, so we have a pretty good agenda, so please bear with us. First resolution up is Resolution 2024-13, a resolution for an extension to the site plan approval for this Capitol District Jewish Holocaust Memorial at 2501 Troy's Connect Road. Resolution is included in the packet, and I'm just going to summarize some key points of the resolution, since we have had previous approvals, and this is an update and extension to the period for performance. Whereas the planning board finds that the timelines involved in community fundraising for the project, the requirement for donations to be given reasonable security on permitting in place, the uniqueness of this proposal, and the overall benefits to the Town and District Unit from such a facility acquire rare exception to the standard approval of two years, and resolve this planning board and zoning commission does hereby grant and extend final site plan approval for special use permit to allow the Capitol District Jewish Holocaust Memorial at 2501 Troy's Connect Road, subject to the following conditions. Now, there's many conditions that were in the original approval, and it's posted online. I'm only going to summarize the new conditions that we're taking action on tonight. And that would start with number 14. Final site plan approval shall be granted for four additional years following the expiration date of Resolution 2022-29. Therefore, site plan approval shall expire on November 14th, 2028, unless construction in accordance with the approved plan has begun, or an additional extension of time has been granted by the planning board. Fifteen, the applicant shall appear before the planning board and zoning commission at their November 2026 meeting to provide a comprehensive update on the status of the project. And finally, number 16, applicant will work with the planning board to attend any necessary meetings if there are major changes to the Route 7 corridor or any other large relevant events with possible implications on the approvals of the project, or relevant events with possible implications on the approvals of the project occur. That's resolution. Do I have a motion, Mr. Khan or Mr. Laflamme?
So move, Mr. Chairman.
Move for adoption by Mr. Khan, and seconded by Mr. Laflamme. Okay, any discussion? We have Mr. Demling in front of us here. I think it's pretty straightforward. You have anything, or any questions at all?
I have no questions.
Okay.
But I will say, because I probably won't be able to say it after the vote, whichever way this gets voted, I just wanted to thank this board for really being a partner with the organization, and as we move forward, I appreciate the fact that you guys even listened to this and considered the motion.
Thank you. Anybody have any comments?
No.
Okay. Ms. Bergama, please call the roll.
Mr. Laflamme.
Aye.
Ms. Strang.
Abstain.
Mr. Khan.
Aye.
Ms. Gomes.
Aye.
Mr. Darpino.
Aye.
Ms. Gold.
Aye.
Chairman Walsh.
Aye. The resolution passes, we got six to one, one abstention. Okay, so the extension has been granted, and again, good luck. See you again soon. All right, next resolution is Resolution 2024-14, a resolution for site plan approval of a tenant change to a convenience store, smoke shop at 3905 State Street. For this resolution, bear with me, my voice is going here, I'm having trouble tonight. Resolve the planning board and zoning commission finds the above referenced site plan meets the requirements of the zoning code and previous site plan and zoning board of appeals approvals, and therefore hereby approves the site plan and tenant change with the following conditions. One, a final parking lights, parking lot, striping and configuration plan shall be submitted to the planning department for their review and approval. A, all parking spaces are to be marked or striped and are to include a concrete curb stop identifying the end of the parking space, and B, 1 ADA compliant parking space shall be included at the front of the building. Two, parking areas are located at the front and rear of the building. Customer entrances are required on the front and rear facades near each respective parking area. Customer signage and path from the back of the building to the front shall be reviewed and approved by the planning and building departments. Three, site lighting. Additional green space and existing facade shall be reviewed by the architectural review board for their comments and recommendations to the applicant. Four, applicant shall repair, replace curb ramps from the sidewalk that serves this property according to the specifications of New York State Department of Transportation, and extend or mark the area of the sidewalk in front of the building to provide a safe pedestrian crossing. And five, any and all proposed signage for the property shall be reviewed and approved by the planning board at future date. Do I have a motion for approval of this resolution?
So move, Chairman.
Moved by Mr. Laflamme for approval, a second?
Second.
And seconded by Ms. Gold. We don't have the applicant, I believe.
Yeah, no, I was going to note, so we prepared this resolution with a lot of conditions to take care of the outstanding issues, because Clark and I actually forgot that the applicant wasn't coming tonight. But we could table it to the next meeting, he was actually okay with that. Or we could continue on with the conditions that push a lot of it to the planning department, it's kind of up to you guys.
One thing is looking at, I did watch the video of the last meeting, and looking at the open items, he knew about some of the open items, wasn't able to complete some of the things that are listed as conditions.
Right.
So I think there's still things that we want to have done, right?
There are.
So, I mean, if, so if it's not going to change, I don't have a problem personally moving forward and just getting it done. I mean, the lighting, we know, we always have everybody look at lighting, the parking needs to be striped, you know, you need to indicate where the parking spots are. So, I mean, it's all stuff that needs to occur, right?
The depiction of the ballards, Laura, they just seem to be from somewhere else? He's just saying that's what he's going to do?
Yeah, I think he was just using that as an example of what he would use.
And so the planning department's going to work and enforce into that, right?
Yes, we can. The only other thing that came up between the planning board meeting and this meeting was the complete streets reviewing the way that the sidewalks come down to this property, and they don't have measurements, and I haven't had a chance to talk about this with, you know, the property owner, but they were saying, like, if there isn't enough room to push, you know, the parking out a little bit so that pedestrians can walk at the front of the building, still have the cars parked, and then still have people walking down the sidewalk, because you can see a little bit from this picture, but like, right here is where the sidewalk, oops, on State Street comes down, and if the cars are parked in front of there, it'll push people who are walking on the sidewalks on Route 5 out and around the cars into the street. So they were, they wanted to know what the measurements were, to see if there was some way to delineate the sidewalk crossing this property and make sure that there was enough room, and then if there wasn't enough room, then they suggested reconfiguring the parking so that it essentially kind of faced, like, to the right of the building, you'd have much less parking at the front, but then you'd have pedestrians, you wouldn't be pushing pedestrians out into the street on State Street. And that is something that we have not had a chance to talk to the applicant about, and it would be one thing that if we wanted to, we could discuss with him before the next meeting, and then see if they could do some measurements there.
No, I'm fine either way, you know, it's not, you know, it's not that urgent, you know.
I mean, I think I agree with the complete streets argument, and would rather see in a drawing.
The measurements, yeah.
The measurements, what, so by the continuation of the sidewalk, I would assume, are we thinking about requiring the stripe across?
That's what I was thinking, I mean, they're complete streets, so they were asking for him to actually put a sidewalk there, but I think that'd be tough for a tenant change, but I do think that, like, a striping acrosswalk between the two sidewalks.
Yeah, I mean, fundamentally, that's his curb, right, so?
Yeah, exactly, like, I'm actually going to, I'm going to show you a better.
I mean, that's a pretty wide thing, as you know, sidewalk would be quite expensive there, I think that's a bit much to ask of the applicant to, that's going to rent the building for a smoke shop, but.
He's the owner, but yes.
Oh, he's the owner of the building now?
Yeah.
He bought the building?
Yeah.
Yeah, but still, I think, again, that, that's his.
But striping, you know, just so it's clear, you know, if people don't park in the striping, you know, I don't have a problem with that.
So I think we need to see the measurements.
Yeah, so, I can just share with you, and just so you guys know, I actually looked, I looked at all of the other buildings we have on State Street to see if this problem occurred regularly, and it does not. This is actually the only place where the building is so close, and there's parking, and this is a curb ramp for a sidewalk here and a sidewalk here, and so the concern is, how do people get from this sidewalk to that sidewalk?
Yeah, I mean.
With this area here.
So Laura, I mean, you're seeing this too, right, but the engineering eye, there's no way.
Yeah, and do we, I mean, some things, like, to me, I don't, I mean, I don't mind talking, I don't, I'd almost rather just see one nicely done handicap parking space at the front of the store with the parking space kind of facing that battery store sign, and then have a really good plan for getting most of the customers from the back to the front, and then that way, and then you can cross stripe the sidewalk there, and then people aren't being pushed out into New York.
All right, it sounds like we're not ready, it sounds like we need to meet with the applicant, he's out of the country, is my understanding.
Yeah.
We're not watching the last meeting, meet with them, because, you know, this obviously could be an expense that we need to at least possibly negotiate. Since we have a motion and a second, is it okay that we have a motion to table the resolution, just take another vote, or do we have to carry through for a vote?
Just move to table.
Move to table, okay. All right, I'll make the motion that we table the resolution for further discussion with the applicant, and to make sure we're on the same page with the parking and potential striping. If I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Ms. Gold.
I will note, this is an existing condition, and I have a concern about going with just one parking space out front, that it won't be enough.
Yeah, that's something.
I think it would impact the value of the site.
Yeah, I mean, it's been used for quite a while with parking in front, but I think, you know, again, once we get the measurements, and if there's an opportunity to improve, we will take a look at it. Any other comments?
So one last comment, so in light of the discussion we're having, are we just going to go with those little curb barriers, or we're going to go with ballards required?
It says curb stops in the resolution, I would assume that curb stops are, you know, functionally fine, and probably a bit cheaper than installing ballards at every parking space, so.
No, I agree with that, I just wanted clarity.
Also, visually better.
Yeah, I mean, the curb stops, so you come with, I think someone just come with big spikes, and you just drive it into the ground.
Yeah. Yeah, no, I mean, I just, but I find it hard that we could move cars back away from the building.
Yep.
And maintain the sidewalk.
I agree.
Okay, so we have a motion to table and a second. Any other discussion? Okay, please call the roll.
Mr. Laflamme.
Aye.
Ms. Strang.
Aye.
Mr. Khan.
Aye.
Ms. Gomes.
Aye.
Mr. Darpino.
Aye.
Ms. Gold.
Aye.
Chairman Walsh.
Aye. Resolution has been tabled for further discussion with the applicant and amongst the planning board, and a note that we didn't have a project lead, so if somebody would like to be the project lead also, here's another opportunity, okay? And if not tonight, you can always email the board if you're interested.
Chairman Walsh, I will be the project lead for this.
David.
And in the interim, if it's okay with the applicant, if we could send some sort of correspondence to him, I'll drive down there and take a picture of a vehicle on the spot so we can have a two-scale picture of what it looks like.
Good.
And I'll send that to the planning department.
Thank you, David.
Ford F-350, two cab truck.
If you want a Jeep or a pickup.
All right, all right, so we're all set there, thank you. Resolution, next resolution, resolution is Resolution 2024-15, a resolution for site plan approval of a 30-foot diameter yurt at 2565 Balltown Road, that's the JCC. This one's pretty short. Resolve that this planning board and zoning commission finds that the site plan application referenced above meets the requirements of the zoning code and previous site plan approvals, and hereby approves this site plan, and this is just for the yurt at JCC. Do I have a motion for approval of the resolution?
So moved.
Moved by Ms. Strang, do I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Ms. Gold. And Mr. Katz, how you doing tonight?
Good, how are you?
All right, any discussion or comments regarding this application?
It's good to see the updated drawings that didn't have the other planned developments on it, right? It's now a cleanup version, so that's good.
All right, that's for this project, my understanding, though, Laura, from our discussion, that there will be a follow-up, there's more work to be had, and there might be an addition or something coming, is that?
If they're ready with the addition, they'll submit it as a secondary site plan application.
At this time, yeah.
Yeah.
And we, you know, talked to Laura about that today, that, you know, any other changes to the property, the drawings should be updated completely to show any changes from a, you know, from a safety, you know, bring it up to date, and also from a safety standpoint in case fire or police need to respond, it's nice to have a set of drawings that are up to date on file.
Sure.
All right, okay. Any other questions or comments on this one? I have none.
I grew up in that neighborhood, I don't see any negative impacts. It looks like a kind of neat structure.
Okay, no other comments, now do please call the roll, Bergama.
Mr. Laflamme.
Aye.
Ms. Strang.
Aye.
Mr. Khan.
Aye.
Ms. Gomes.
Aye.
Mr. Darpino.
Aye.
Ms. Gold.
Aye.
Chairman Walsh.
Aye, resolution is approved.
Thank you very much.
And congratulations, and good luck. Next up is, excuse me, Resolution 2024-16, a resolution for lot line adjustment at 850 Oregon Ave slash 875 Stark Ave. Again, I'll just summarize. Resolve that the planning board and zoning commission does hereby grant final lot line adjustment approval for 850 Oregon Ave and 875 Stark Ave, as shown on the aforementioned two-page survey summary with the following conditions. One, prior to recording the plat, the applicant residing at 850 Oregon Ave shall obtain valid building permits from the Town and District Unit Building Department to bring all existing accessory structures on the property into compliance with the District Unit zoning code. And two, prior to recording the plat, the final lot line adjustment map and associated deed shall be sent to the planning department for their review and approval. Any changes, additions, or deletions requested shall be addressed to the satisfaction of the planning department before printing the MyLars. And, let's see, project lead on that one?
Me.
That's, okay, Ms. Gold?
I'll move.
You have a motion, motion for approval by Ms. Gold, do I have a second?
Second.
And seconded by Mr. Khan. Discussion? Yeah, the only thing I talked to Laura about, Mr. Smith, how you doing?
Good, how are you?
Good to see you. Is that, you know, it's a little bit atypical, but you're able to come into zoning code compliance without going to the zoning board of appeals, is my understanding.
Correct.
All right, and that's important, because usually we, you know, sometimes make a recommendation in the zoning board, and you get your, you know, appeal before you, you know, we act on this, because it's kind of like a subdivision, all right? Basically, it's a subdivision of one property, so, so if you've worked coming into compliance with this accessory structures, and, you know, we should be okay. All right, any other comments at all?
And this does make a lot of sense, because it's closer to conforming to our standard lot layouts, and I truly don't see how the neighbor up above on Stark can benefit from the property, because there is such a huge difference in elevation, and it's a pretty steep one, like, almost vertical.
Yeah, yeah, it's pretty steep.
Okay, any other questions or comments? Ms. Bergama, please call the roll.
Mr. Laflamme.
Aye.
Ms. Strang.
Aye.
Mr. Khan.
Aye.
Ms. Gomes.
Aye.
Mr. Darpino.
Aye.
Ms. Gold.
Aye.
Chairman Walsh.
Aye, resolution's approved.
Thank you all for your time.
And thank you for coming, appreciate it. All right, next up, we have a recommendation to ZBA regarding 2546 Balltown Road, and this is for the new signage that requires a variance. And, let's see, this one is Mr. Wheeler, is that correct? Ms. Strang, Ms. Khan, and Mr. Wheeler?
Yep.
Yep. You want to go ahead, you want me to?
Yeah, you can go.
Yeah, I just, I actually drove by the property, and actually took some videos coming both ways, because I kind of wanted to see what I was going to approach both directions. It didn't seem to be, you know, it wasn't a big deal to me, but I would say that I just, I kind of struggle a little bit with the necessity of it. I think that, I think you're in a residential neighborhood to some degree, I think that has to be taken into consideration. I don't have as much issue with it because of where it is, you know, provided that it keeps the smaller sides that we discussed, and those are my views.
The one thing that we need to work through, or at least we need to clear, point of clarification with the applicant, the denial letter is written for a, where is it? Yep, 16.1 square foot sign, is it, was it the intention to go back to the 36-square-foot sign that was originally proposed?
Yeah, since the last meeting, we learned that this is actually a cardiac urgent care. So, if you're having chest pains or whatnot, you can actually go here without an appointment, get in to see the cardiologist, and they determine from there what needs to happen. So it's actually a cardiac urgent care, which makes us want to go back up to the larger sign, as people need to find this, more so than an urgent care, it's not, you know, bumps and bruises, this is a cardiac urgent care.
I mean, so shouldn't the sign reflect that it's an urgent care?
I guess it's known, is what I was told, that people, you know, know that the cardiac urgent care is on Balltown Road, it's cardiology associate disconnection, so if you see that sign, you'll know it's in there, but we need to get people to the building. I mean, I learned this because somebody that I know ended up going there with her husband, and there was no sign, so they, as they said, it would have been quite helpful.
I think it needs to reflect that, though, I think that's important.
To have the cardiac urgent care on the sign.
Yeah, I mean, I could surmise why the organization doesn't want to put urgent care, because then I think people will go there for any kind of urgent care.
Correct.
But I don't think we can have it both ways, right? It's.
Yeah, the sign is as proposed, only it's larger, it's the 36-square-foot versus the 8.1 that was originally the basis of the denial letter.
Right, so I don't think we can consider as a planning board that it is a cardiac urgent care if it's not going to be labeled as such.
Yeah, I think the bottom line is two things, we need to update the denial to reflect that the area variance would actually be 28 square feet, that's 36 minus the eight, right? That's allowed by the zoning code, that'd be one thing, and then whether we disagree with what's on the sign, that would be part of the basis for our denial. Or, you know, or positive or negative recommendation to the zoning board of appeals. Yep, all right.
And I'm sticking with my position that I don't think the sign is beneficial, I think it, for people who would actually catch it with their, maybe out of the corner of their eye, I think it's a distraction, that's a high-traffic area, speeds are often high, I think such signage belongs on the monument sign out front, where you would expect drivers to be looking for a sign. And I'm actually going farther than that, because I don't think this type of sign should be allowed in town, I can't think of a place that would benefit from it. I can think of some places where it is beneficial, coming off the Northway, or I-90, or the Thruway, there are some office parks and industrial parks in other municipalities where, when you pull in, you can see signage up on a building, and it helps you find your way to it. This doesn't do that, so I think it's just incongruous with the neighborhood and inappropriate, and I won't support it.
Okay, so I think we need to do two things here, and tell me if I'm wrong, Mr. Hess or Laura. So I think first, what we should do is make sure that the applicant wants to modify this to a 36-square-foot sign, and modify the denial letter, and we can do that, I believe, by a show of hands, as long as the applicant, you know, that's what you want. And, because you're going to go to ZBA, and we're making a recommendation to ZBA, and they don't have to take our recommendation, and that's what you want to do, so we'll make a recommendation on a 36-square-foot sign, if that's what you like, Mr. Wheeler.
Yep, that's what we want to do.
Okay, so I'll modify the denial letter, second paragraph, last line, it says, as proposed, there is one wall sign measuring 16.1 square feet, we're going to modify that, strike the 16.1 and change that to 36 square feet, therefore, a variance of 28 square feet of sign area is required. Because, you know, he's allowed an eight-square-foot in every sign, facade sign, so it would be 28-square-foot area variance for the ZBA that we are going to make our recommendation on. Are you okay with that?
Yes, correct.
Okay, all right, so as always, we'll ask the three questions for our recommendation to ZBA, first question being effect on comprehensive plan, and I'll just look at the project leads, so, state. If you need help, I'd be glad to give you help.
Yeah, I need some.
My view is that there's no effect on the comprehensive plan.
Yeah, I would agree, there's no.
You know, the zoning coordinates allows for, you know, the ZBA to be able to make decisions, and it doesn't affect any of the development or any of the future plans along the road there, so my recommendation would be no effect on the comprehensive plan.
Even at a larger size?
Any size, well, we are, the larger size, we are working, this is the 28-square-foot. So that's what we already decided, so.
I disagree with that, so.
That's okay, we're going to call the, we're going to call the roll. Anybody have comments on that? Right, anybody else? Okay, so effect on comprehensive plan, it's no effect. All those that say there's no effect, please raise your hand. Right, that's one, two, three, four, five, no effect. And I was being, the other two votes are there is an effect on the comprehensive plan. So that'd be five to two, okay? Suitability of use for the area proposed.
Chairman, can we just get the reasons for the?
For the effect on comprehensive plan, we usually don't.
Yeah.
Usually, okay, for the people that say it doesn't support the comprehensive plan?
Right, yeah, the dissenting opinion.
Yes, because usually that we, you know, usually it'll, there's no effect, but. Ms. Gold and Ms. Laflamme?
I think where I'm struggling is that it's not the owner of the building, this is a tenant. And I know that has nothing to do with the direct comprehensive plan, but I am concerned about it not fitting in with the residential focus of the comprehensive plan, even though it's mixed-use. If it was the building owner, I might be more open to it. Maybe I'm not consistent with that statement, but that's where I'm having a difficult time with the residential focus of our area.
How do I formulate this? I think it has a negative effect on the comprehensive plan because we don't encourage such signage like this. And I think it sets a bad precedent. And it really isn't consistent, that's why it needs a variance.
Okay, anything else? Got that, Laura?
Yep.
All right, next one, to me, this is the telltale where I think some of those things you just mentioned would be binned into suitability of use for the area proposed. So I looked again at the project leads, is it suitable?
Not the size, it's not suitable.
Okay, so the recommendation from?
Yeah, I concur that this is not suitable for use. And by way of reasoning, I think, so definitely what Mr. Laflamme said underneath the comprehensive plan, what Ms. Gold said about the nature of this facade sign at this location on Balltown Road intersection. And I must say that, you know, we've got a very properly functioning monument sign that clearly communicates at driver level, head-on vision, right? What the services are provided in the building. And, you know, something this high up, this far up in the residential neighborhood with heavy traffic going down Balltown Road is something that I think is unsuitable, especially at this size.
I will note this is adjacent to Craig's School and there is pedestrian traffic coming to and from Craig's School, not tons, but there is some, including some of the kids who come out of school and go down the field to their homes. And I don't think anything that's going to distract drivers from the ability to see that activity and the other cars and the cars pulling out of the schoolyard, et cetera, is beneficial to the town in any manner. I think it's a detriment, a dangerous one.
Okay, my opinion is that it's not suitable also. But I think the reason is, my reason is, is that I think you have to take a look at all the signs on the building and that whole, you know, whole area and come up with a plan. If it's that important, maybe it requires modifying existing signage in order to get the point across for a, you know, that it's an emergency place to go. And also, one of the boards, maybe Laura, was it the Architectural Review Board? That mentioned that typically you just put the number of the building. So if we had a, even if it was slightly larger for me, just the number of the building up. So I'm looking to get the urgent care and it's at, what's the address? 2546 Balltown Road. So I'm looking for 2546 Balltown Road. So I could see the number being up high or being on the front somewhere that's prominent so that they could find the building. Because I think that might be more important and that's their opinion also. So, so for those reasons, I'm saying it's not suitable also. All right, so if nobody has any comments, so all those in favor that it's not suitable, please show, do so by show of hands. Yep, so.
One.
Okay, so it's six, it's not suitable, and one, no, and Mr. Darpino?
Yeah, I think that the sign itself is fine on the upper part of the building, but the overall size of it is the only thing that we seem to be wrestling with. So I think a sign is appropriate there, whether it's raised numbers. I wasn't really opposed to the smaller sign. But again, the size may be something that ultimately determines what ends up on top of the building if approved.
All right, because originally we're, you know, the denial was for, and we were focusing on 16.1 square foot. And since it's 32, you know, but thanks, David. Okay, so that's been voted on, so bottom line is recommendation to the zoning board of appeals?
I do not recommend it.
Recommend denial of the request? All right, I don't think we need to have reasons for that. We already have the reasons for the other two bases. So all those in favor of recommending that the ZBA deny the request for an area variance, signify by saying aye or show of hands.
Aye.
Okay, so that's unanimous. All right, Mr. Wheeler, so you have your recommendation to the zoning board of appeals. We'll see how you make out there. And is there anything on this project further for tonight? Any questions?
Well, that's it.
That's it, okay.
Thank you.
All right, thank you, Mr. Wheeler. I know you're not going anywhere, so I think you're on the agenda again for something else here in a little while, right?
Yep.
Okay, all right, so we're all set there. Next one is recommendation to ZBA for 1769 Union Street. This is a recommendation for signage, also requiring an area variance. And this is the 1769 Union, which is the Capital Cardiology Associates. And I'll just summarize the denial. And this is regarding, it's properties located in RP Residential Professionals zoning district, Schedule IH, Column 7, 1 states for non-residential uses. One wall sign is allowed per principal building, which shall be attached to the building and shall not protrude more than one foot from the building face. Such a sign shall be a single-face sign and shall not exceed eight square feet, just like the last applicant. At the March 15, 2017 zoning board of appeals meeting, the board granted variance for five additional wall signs and two, a two-foot projection variance for a blade sign and a variance for 285 square feet of facade sign area. So for this application as proposed, there is one additional wall sign measuring 105.4 square feet. Therefore, a variance for one wall sign and 405.4 square feet of additional sign area are required. Schedule IH, Column 7, 3 states for non-residential uses. All signs shall be approved by the planning board for size, construction, and lighting. In general, the following standards shall apply. Signs serviced shall be made wood or masonry with painted or raised messages. The number of separate colors on a sign shall be limited to plus white and sign lighting shall be limited to direct external lighting. As proposed, there is one additional wall sign constructed of aluminum and acrylic with internal illumination. Therefore, one variance for, one variance wall sign of aluminum and acrylic with internal illumination is needed. So there's two, two parts of this denial, okay? The additional 105-square-foot sign and the construction of the sign. All right, the applicant, is we have an applicant on board or we have an applicant present for this project?
Yes.
Hi, how you doing? Did you want to add anything or talk about any justification before we make our recommendation to the zoning board of appeals?
I submitted a written response, do you guys have that?
It was in the agenda statement?
It came in after the deadline and it was addressed to the zoning board.
Okay, so you can brief us on it, though, if you have it in front of you, you can. Anything you'd like to add, you're welcome to.
So I believe it's a special situation. There's so many logos on that building that are AMC. We're an independent entity, so for the first meeting when we brought this up, we were told that those signs were enough and people should know what's in the building based on those AMC signs. We are not AMC. We're a separate entity. We have three separate service lines in there. It's a bariatric practice, enhanced cardiac access, which is a walk-in clinic, and there's cardiac appointments with rotating cast doctors. So the monument sign on the front is too small and it's branded AMC. So it just creates confusion for people trying to find Capital Cardiology in a building that is branded completely different from us.
Is it listed, is there a monument? I'm looking through the package here, is there a monument sign out front that lists?
There is a monument sign, there's a bunch of names on there. And it's got a giant AMC logo on the top.
Yep, that's, but right now, Capital Cardiology Associates is not under depiction of the monument sign in the package.
No, we're taking, Cardiology Associates, this connection.
Yeah. I'm sorry, we're what? They're replacing this guy, so this one on the middle left.
So there will be signage, that'll be replaced at insert or whatever on that sign, is that my understanding?
Yes.
All right, so similar to the last sign we just worked on, signs are tough, as we all know. All right, so we have to make our recommendation to the zoning board of appeals on this. So we don't have waiver capability, so that's why we're making a recommendation.
I struggle with the night view. I mean, I struggle with the day view because I appreciate that it's, you know, it's branded as it is and I understand that. And perhaps that may have been a consideration when they started, not knowing whether perhaps they were going to actually be able to have this signage on the building. But nonetheless, I think it's too much. I did my same drive-by both ways. I really oppose the lit sign at night. I don't think it's appropriate and, and that's, those are my feelings.
Okay. All right, we can ask the questions, just like last time, effect on comprehensive plan? Think you know my position?
Yeah, there's.
I would say no.
Yeah, I say no, that's my opinion.
Don't affect the conference.
All right, all right, so the recommendation from the project lead is no effect on the comprehensive plan? Let's see, we can take a poll on that. All those that say there's no effect signify by saying aye or show of hands.
Aye.
All right, so anybody disagrees with that?
One.
You?
I'm flip-flopping, I guess, between the two, but no, I guess I disagree, I disagree. I think there is an impact on that.
All right, same as, same as last, same reasoning as last time? Okay, again, I don't think there's, you know, well, obviously my vote is there's no effect. All right, suitability of use for the area proposed?
I don't think it is. I just, I, you know, I hate to have any kind of prejudicial thought against it being, you know, an Albany Med branded building. I just, I just think overall, it's just too much. I think it's too much. Those are my thoughts.
Okay.
Yeah, this is a, this property, as mentioned, was, you know, highly variance relative to signs. And, you know, there were special circumstances having to do with the fact of a branding that the building is allowed to have, the Albany Med part, right, it's their building. And the emergent care that was a service to the community in letting the community know that there is emergency services available. But beyond that, right, this is going too much above and beyond for facade signs. And I understand and appreciate, again, that, you know, it's a different tenant, different from the building, but we have that all the time, right? Previous, the previous discussion item that we had was, or the previous resolution that we had, the recommendation that the ZBA, right, is a different landlord altogether, right? So that's not enough of an extenuating circumstance, just drawing a distinction between who the landlord is in the building and what the tenant is for putting up a facade sign. Plus the additional comments, but, you know, my view is the sign itself is unsuitable, but definitely when you add in the characteristics of the sign, like its size, like its lighting during the night, et cetera, that makes it further unsuitable. So those are my arguments.
I agree.
Okay. All right, so the recommendation for those reasons that it's not suitable. Anybody else have any comments regarding that, we'll take a vote? I mean, I'm kind of right where I was last time, is the recommendation is that the number of the building is enough to be able to find it, you know, when you're looking for an address. As long as you have the address, you should be able to find whatever you're looking for. I think there's quite a few signs on this building already, as you could tell from the amount of area variances that were granted. So I think it might be a little bit on overload, but again, it's, we're only making, not only it's important recommendation, but the ZBA, if they, you know, the justification is for the ZBA, if they feel differently, well, that'll be their role to make that decision. But the recommendation is that it's not suitable. All those that say it's not suitable, please show hands, I guess. And that's unanimous, that's not suitable. And the recommendation to the zoning board of appeals? Is that approve or deny the?
Deny.
Denial is the recommendation. All those that agree that the recommendation is denial, and that is also unanimous. Okay, so you have your recommendation to the zoning board of appeals. You know, again, they're the authority here and let's see how you do there, all right? You have any other questions? We all set?
No.
Okay, all right, thank you. And good luck at the ZBA. All right, that's it for new business tonight, discussion items. First up being a sign, well, I'd be darned. 2301 Knott Street East, that's the TD Bank, an application for a site plan review for new signage. And you have an applicant that's representing TD Bank tonight here or online?
Yep, I'm Tom Wheeler with AJ Signs.
All right, Mr. Wheeler. This is new to us tonight, so I don't know if you want to just brief us on it first and then take a look at the images?
Yep, this is a, this is a rebrand, so TD Banks changed their logo and they're changing their signage throughout their, throughout their branches. So we're looking to change out some existing signs with the new logo. And then this, this bank's also setback from Balltown Road, but it's on the corner of Balltown and not one parcel back. So we want to add a sign, so we'll end up with a sign facing Knott, a sign facing Balltown, and then a sign facing the parking lot. So the main entrance will have the sign over it. So we're changing two signs to the new logo and adding a third for this project.
Okay, and as far as a, from the planning office, Laura, I'm not sure if you had how much time you had to look this over, is this, we have waiver capability here, is that in this location?
Yes, we do.
All right, so the waivers look like for me, two signs on one facade and 70% of the sign area for the TD logo and then two other signs, basically the sign area, 70% increase over what's allowed, is my interpretation of that, correct, Laura?
Yeah.
So we have the capability of granting waivers. The rest of the signs are compliant and it's a rebranding. So I don't know if you want to pull up maybe some of the images and see what the board thinks? I took a look at it, you know.
So this is replacing the old logo with the new branding. This is a replacement. This is also a replacement. Old logo, it's a new logo, new signage, little bit, little bit larger, but not much.
So are these sizes? I'm sorry, it's hard for me to tell, help me out. Are these sizes within?
No, no, it requires a waiver because they're larger.
But, but waiver?
We can do the waiver. We can do the waivers of the signs. Some of them are in compliance and some of them are a little big. I think that this one.
I mean, so we're going off of, I'm looking at the table, right? Yeah, that one. So first of all, why is SO7, SO8, and SO9 crossed off? Is because they're not under consideration for this request?
Because they're.
Compliant, right?
Compliant directional signs, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, they can just swap those out.
Any question I would have, Mr. Wheeler? You know, are slightly larger, I can understand the rebranding. Is there a reason why if they're slightly larger, it'd just been the same size? I mean, in fact, they almost look the same for the existing and proposed. Just seems like it's just, in some situations, just a larger sign, they almost look the same. Maybe because they have a border on them, is that the difference?
There's a little bit of color change, there's real subtle differences. It's a refresh, rebrand, they have their standard signs and they're, they're using across their, all their branches. This is just one of their standard signs that most closely fits into this area on the building.
Certainly could be made a little smaller and conforming.
I have to go back to the client, see if they have a standard sign that's a little smaller or not. The one on the left is a little small, a little hard to see. This building's setback quite a bit, so the larger sign is definitely going to be a little more visible. Makes a little more sense.
It only has two letters that are pretty distinct.
Yeah.
I don't see the need for the larger size, I'm sorry.
Yeah, and look, I recall, you know, when we went through designing with the directional signs and monument signs and we all acknowledged that we needed to guide people to this building. Right? I must say, look, I'm just going to, you know, say what's, I think I'm okay with the fact of putting the TD Bank sign because that's your new logo and to replace it. But the rest of them look like there's no change at all, so I'm going to question why is there a change? I see, you know, sign two being slightly larger, but, you know, if we're going to be debating shades of green here.
And there's one additional sign on the one building facade.
Oops, it's this one.
Yeah, and I, I'll be honest with you, I don't have, I don't have a problem with that. My, I guess the only question I'm aligned with you, Mr. Khan, is if the size of the ones are there are sufficient and it's available, hey, you know, we could, we could act on a waiver for just the one additional sign and for the front facade where it says TD Bank versus just TD. Now, that's one way handling this. The other option is if the, if we're not aligned and Mr. Wheeler wants to take this to the zoning board of appeals, again, we could also make a recommendation and not grant the waivers.
What direction is this one, what street is this facing?
This is facing Knott.
So the TD Bank, so page sign 01, yeah, that direction is facing Knott Street.
This one is facing Knott. This one faces Balltown and that one faces like Starbucks.
Yeah. This is the main entrance.
That's the main entrance right there, essentially.
I'm, I'm okay with the main entrance as proposed.
Yeah, I am also, is there any other comments, just so we can give some direction here?
Yeah.
That would be what westbound traffic would see.
No, this, this would be.
No, no, I'm sorry, westbound traffic would see the main entrance. Yeah, go on, go on westbound on Knott Street.
Oh, this is facing Starbucks, though.
Yeah, this one faces Starbucks.
Yeah. Yep.
That's why you don't have a
This is Starbucks over here.
The main entrance to the building, so.
Yeah. No, I agree.
Suitable for that sign. Sign oh two is one I would say no.
And that, that's the one we wanted to make a little larger, the one facing Balltown. It's also a full parcel back. So your viewing distance is the farthest.
But it's a precedent, right? If we change it, it's just, I mean, not, not that it's that big of a change.
I don't know about precedent. I mean, we have waiver capability. We've utilized it before.
I just don't see a very big difference in the size.
I think the question still remains there. If, if, if it's basically the same sign, only a little bit bigger, you know.
I prefer to see it through.
So the waiver that is needed on sign two is just the logo.
Sign two, and which is sign two? I don't think it says it on the, on the
Sign two is the one that's facing Balltown Road.
Yeah.
But it's a little bigger.
It is a little bigger, but typically if you, well, I could double check, but, um, I'd, I'd have to double check on that for you. But typically, if it's facing a road, it's allowed the 50 square feet of linear or the, in the length of its linear frontage. The one thing that's weird about this that I'd have to double check is that the lot line doesn't actually touch Balltown Road. So the building does face Balltown Road, but the lot line doesn't actually touch it. So it may have gotten like a previous waiver because it may sort of still be considered an interior sign and not actually allowed to have a facade sign. I'd have to go back and look at the old approvals on that. But in, in our chart, it's only showing us needing a, um, a logo waiver.
It's sounding familiar.
Right? Because, I mean, it, it does look like it faces Balltown Road, but it doesn't actually, because Stewart's is in between and Balltown Road.
Right. And Laura, would you pull up the picture just so I can be clear which, you know, you got the chart, but
Sorry, yeah.
Yeah.
Oops. It's all the way back up here.
Yeah, thank you.
Yeah. So, so this, S, the second sign, the one that is getting slightly, here's the back of Stewart's here. This is the back of Stewart's.
Yep.
And Starbucks is over on this side and this is Knott Street with the bike path right here.
Monument sign is actually on Balltown, right?
Uh, monument sign where they're popping out the panel is on Balltown. Yep. Over by the entrance to, I believe it shall be called Market Square.
And the one facade that doesn't have a sign that has one proposed that's on the uh, facing, you know, see, I don't have a problem with that. It'd be nice if they're all, you know, kept the same size as the, the ones that are there now. But I don't have a problem with an additional sign. That's just, again, just my opinion.
I, I second that too. There's no way to identify that building when you're on that street coming from that direction. You don't know where TD is.
So, so if I were to summarize what I think I got here is, or what we have is, is that we'd like to see the size of the signs stay the same, except for potentially the one that faces
Starbucks.
Yeah.
Starbucks.
Yeah, going west, that would be the one going west.
Yeah, yeah. It's the main, the main entrance.
And we're okay for the, that's when it says bank, right? TD Bank?
Yep.
Yeah, we're okay with that.
So signs oh two and sign oh three. And I'm okay also with having a sign oh three at that location facing Knott Street, but really at the sizes of size oh two, of sign oh two.
Right. Does that make sense, Mr. Wheeler?
So, so you're, you're good with this one? You're good with the one that faces Starbucks? But the one that faces Balltown, you'd like to see the same size as what's already on the building?
Yeah. Any of the new signs that, except for the one on the front facade and the one that, the new sign?
Yeah, I think let's restate this. Concerning this sign facing Knott Street, we'd like to see it at the size of the one that is currently facing Balltown also.
Right.
Yeah. So S two and S three, both the same size as the existing S two.
Yes.
And we're, and we're okay with the additional sign, as long as it's the same size and we're okay with the change on the front that says TD Bank, right?
Okay. That, yeah, that makes sense to me. Let me go back to my client and see if they're okay with that and get revised drawings over to you.
Yep. And if, you know, if they're okay with that, then we can, you know, and the board seems like they're okay with it, we can vote on that and they can just handle it through the waiver capability. If you want to, you know, stay, you know, hold fast to the size, so on and so forth, then, you know, we could also make a recommendation to the ZBA if, if we don't support the waiver.
Yeah.
All right.
Yep. I'll go back to them with that and see what we can do.
All right. So we need to talk about four, five, and six too, right? The directionals?
They're, I think they were compliant, right?
They're compliant. They're compliant, but they're different from what was there before. It's a little bit big. They're a little bit bigger, but they're still compliant.
That's my understanding.
Yeah, yeah.
Right. And the monument, you know, the inserts are different, but again, compliant.
Yep.
So I think they're just popping the panels out of these ones.
Okay.
What about the green vinyl graphics in the windows themselves on the facades? Is that compliant with our Town Center overlay? Go to, not necessarily, this one. So there's a storefront there. You've taken off the dark green banding below the original sign. And then at the storefront, you've got the squares that are the lime green color? Happens on the
Yeah, it happens on all of them, actually. Here in this window here. And then this, these, all four of these windows. It looked like
They're adding some green to basically give it some visibility or signature, right?
Yep. It's mounted on the interior of the glass. That makes a difference.
We don't regulate interior.
Yeah. Plus, I don't, I don't personally have a concern with it. I mean, do I like it? No. But I, I don't, I'm not concerned with it. Any other comments regarding that?
Given where it is, it doesn't bother me.
Okay. All right, Mr. Wheeler. So it sounds like we're okay with the green applicant on the windows or whatever it may be.
Application.
Okay. All right. So you take that back to, to the sponsor and see if we can change some of the sizes there to be consistent with what's already there. And I think we can, we can get through this with waivers.
Sounds good.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Wheeler, again.
Thank you.
All right. And speaking of signs, we're going to keep on this trend tonight. Next up is 2333 Knott Street East, Market 32, an application for site plan review for their signage. And we have Mr. Lee representing Market 32, who's going to summarize for us.
Hi. So we're looking for a waiver for 13 new facade signs on this south facade facing Knott Street. We're also looking for a waiver for 70, the 124.5 square feet of the main Market 32 facade sign. Currently, the, its schedule allows for a 74.5 square foot sign and also a waiver for allowing six directional signs measuring six square feet above grade. The amount of signs, size of signs that we're proposing for the facade of the store is consistent with what we did at our Balltown Road store a few years ago and submitted that to the board for review and approval. The actual size of the Market 32 sign on the facade is a little smaller than our normal sign. Typically, it's about 175 square feet. This one's a little smaller due to the size of the facade that we're going to place it on. And again, the department signs are non-illuminated white letters across the facade, highlighting the departments that are within the store.
And those are standard sizes?
Yes. Those are 12 inch tall letters, same as what we had in Balltown Road.
Yeah.
Uh, the Market 32 is an illuminated LED sign. All the rest of them are non-illuminated. Welcome script sign is similar to what we put on Balltown Road at the main entrance to the store.
Yeah. So, you know, we so, kind of saw this preliminarily when the tenant change.
Correct.
But we left that as an open item. We had a little bit of discussion back then regarding this. I was, I think I challenged a little bit about the number of signs and whether we really, really need to have the signs regarding, you know, bakery, et cetera. But it wasn't, it's my understanding that those actually give you a direction of where they're located within the store.
Correct.
And that's the purpose of them, which I didn't realize the first time.
Yeah, especially the grocery, the grocery pickup that's on the far left-hand side. It's kind of hidden in a corner.
Yeah.
We don't have our customers that come into that grocery pickup program. That's where we bring our grocery pickup out to our customers. And the parking will be over on that side of the store. And the recycling center, the, the green band there that kind of highlights the fact that that's our recycling area.
All right. And so, Ms. Gold, you're proud, you agree to be project lead on this?
Yes. And I think one thing that's really conspicuous by its absence is that there is no pharmacy in this one.
Correct.
And I think that's important. If you don't see that, it's a good clue that there isn't one. And you're right. One time was a request to put a product name out there and we asked that be reconsidered and has, that has been withdrawn, which is a plus. But I think indicating what the product types are and generally where they're located is really helpful. It's so, it's a good sized store. And it's kind of the way they do things.
Yep. I didn't realize. I know pharmacies. Are there any other differences between the Balltown Road and
The Balltown Road had two Market 32 signs, one on the front entryway, which is bigger than the one we have. And then on the side of the store facing Balltown Road, there was another illuminated Market 32 sign. So we have one less illuminated sign on this facade, on this location.
As far as the interior though, besides the pharmacies, are there any other lack of services?
Everything else is the same. Yep.
And we got the two top tower signs, right? So you have the two tower signs.
Yes. So that used to say Shoprate Square. And, you know, working with the landlord, they approved the idea of a Market 32 place sign in that corner tower. And that'll also be illuminated, just like the Shoprate sign, boys.
So any concerns or any thought, Laura, as regarding the directional signs or any of the, um, the ones that are a little bit higher, the six foot? Trying to find those. What do you call those? Post signs and so on and so forth? The planning, planning office have any concerns at all?
So we, just looking at the tower signs real quick, as long as, you know, the brand is okay with you guys, that's really just a swap like for like.
Right.
So those ones, we didn't really have any comments on, um, didn't really have any comments on the directional signs. Um, I think we would be concerned if all of the words on the building were illuminated. But, you know.
Right, but they're not, right?
But they're not. So because we don't want to see that much illumination facing the residential
Exactly.
apartments across the street. So like being, like paying attention to illumination on these signs, I think is really important. And we've had that conversation with tenants there before. But unilluminated signs to make it look like a regular Market 32, we didn't.
That, that's a good point, Laura. Thanks. And the illumination is basically the Market 32 and any other ones? The welcome? Or is there anything else that's illuminated?
No, the welcome sign is not illuminated.
So it's just the Market 32?
Just a larger white, solid letter.
Good.
Yeah, most of the time, the white stands out enough by itself.
Say it again, sorry.
Most of the time, the white stands out enough by itself.
Yeah, there's enough illumination on the, the parking lot signs to, to do enough illuminating of those without having to be so
In a snowstorm, it doesn't show up so great. But other than that.
Yeah. In terms of colors, the Town Center Overlay District, I think the color combination or the count of colors, I think satisfies.
Yeah, we actually specifically had that conversation with our building inspector to make sure we were being consistent. But we have in the past always considered the kind of mosaic of brown to be a single brown, essentially.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yep.
And plus it's, you know, the company
Yeah, actually, for whatever it's worth, I mean, this, this color combination does look a little better than the previous.
Than the yellow, yeah.
And the yellow and red.
Yeah.
Yeah. So.
All right.
And like, you know, at the site plan, I believe Price Shoppers, you know, striping the crosswalk across here. This is the enter and the, enter and the exit sign, I think? Yeah. I don't think that they're placed where they would interfere at all with people walking. I don't know that they're necessarily needed, but I don't know that they necessarily detract from the site either.
Yeah. I mean.
I think on the tenant change, you, you asked us to increase the amount of the striping across the entrance way?
Yes. Yeah. So I feel like the important thing to me on this intersection is that the striping goes across. That's my main concern with that, which we already addressed. I don't have
All right. So Ms. Gold, recommendation is to grant the waivers? Is that where we're at?
Two here on the corner.
Hopefully you're all on board.
Yeah. I understand the, you know, the marking basically is the company standard. I was a little concerned at first regarding the number of signs, but since they're not illuminated, I can get behind it personally.
I mean, it represents a standard we did at the other
Yep. And it's a Town Center Overlay District versus a commercial highway, which is the, the main difference. But I think it, you know, it'll be okay.
And it does kind of highlight that it won't have pharmacy.
Yeah, and maybe, Rob, Rob, jump in here if I'm wrong, but that we grant the, the waivers with the condition that the signage is none, remains non-illuminated, just so that once the square footage isn't there, it couldn't come back and have, because that much illumination on that facade facing would be very scary.
So I agree. Yeah. And like I said, with all the parking lot lights that are shining on the building, it would have been a waste of energy.
Yeah, for you guys. But like, you know, 25 years from now, Price Shepherd changes hands and changes, and all of a sudden they want all of those signs to be illuminated. If we don't put some kind of condition on it, we wouldn't want them to just be like, whoa, we already have the square footage. Now we're going to illuminate them. I like that idea.
Yeah, I think that's a good condition.
I think we can do that, can't we?
Yeah. I mean, you're giving a waiver. You can
Yeah, I think we can.
Condition it the way you want.
Yeah.
Yep. No, it sounds good. All right. So it sounds like if everybody's okay, we'll have a resolution addressing the waivers at the next meeting.
Okay, great. Thank you very much for your time.
May 13th.
Okay. Have a good evening.
All right.
Is the store open yet?
To June?
June?
Do we have a date yet for opening?
I'm sorry. End of May, beginning of June.
Is sooner
Progressing quite, quite rapidly too.
There are people who are rooting for sooner.
Yes, yes, I understand. Yeah. Yeah. Some of the tenants in there are going to be glad that we're going to be opening soon. So their business improves too.
All right.
Yes.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Lee.
All right. Thank you.
All right. Okay. And next up is 3359 Consol Road. That's Ingersoll Place. It's an application for site plan review for a pavilion. I'm going to recuse myself on this. And Mr. Diopino will be acting chair. And I'm going to step away for a moment and come back when you're done. Thank you.
Okay. Ingersoll Place has an application in to add a pavilion onto their property. And go ahead and introduce yourself and give us a quick recap of the project.
Okay. Good evening. My name's Carolyn Thompson. I'm the administrator at Ingersoll Place. I'm not asking for a sign. We'd like to construct a pavilion on the east side of our property. We have some land back there, um, right next to our parking lot. It goes down a little bit, but we have a pond. And then our property abuts the Rice or Reese Wildlife Preserve. So there's a lot of animal activity, wildlife in that area. And we would like to construct a pavilion so that our residents can enjoy that part of the outdoors with their families, their visitors. We would like to do some programming out there. Our activities department will hold programs out there. We've already been in touch with, like the Environmental Clearing House and the Kelly Adirondack Center. And they're both going to do some programming in the pavilion for our residents. So we just think it would be a really nice additional area for them to enjoy the outdoors. It doesn't, we won't have any electricity or water out there. It's just going to be a covered pavilion with seating underneath. There's really no, nobody that would be able to see it in terms of our neighbors. I don't know if you could see, we have one neighbor that you can kind of see through the trees on Consol Road, down Consol a little bit. But you can even hardly see that neighbor. But other than that, there would be almost nobody else that could even see the pavilion. So I don't think there'd be like a impact to our neighbors that would oppose it. So do you have any other questions about it or? So it would be back there, right by, kind of where you can see the shed, right to the right of the shed.
Right. So it is partially visible from Consol Road?
From Consol Road, yes. It'll be visible. But across the street from Consol, I don't know if you can see one of the pictures. It's the parking lot of OD Heck. So nobody in that building could really see it. Maybe a corner of it. But yes, from Consol and the parking lot, you would be able to see it.
Okay. There's a small shed that's There's a small shed that's right next to it. The placement of that seems a little tight. Was there ever any consideration about maybe spacing those out? Or what is that, what is that little shed used for?
It's really just used for some gardening equipment and, you know, salt and things like that. We thought about it and the landscaper I'm working with, he actually even wants to save, there's a tree next to that shed that he wants to save also. He doesn't want to cut down that tree. So I think there's enough room to fit it all. It is a little tight. We don't have a lot of property.
I think it's nice to have an amenity like this.
I think they'll enjoy it. So we're going to have a, you know, ADA compliant. Most of our residents use walkers and wheelchairs. So we will have a compliant walkway. Right now, you can't access that lawn at all, really. There's a slight slope up to it. So we were going to be doing a walkway, you know, five feet at least, walkway up to a cement pad. So it's all one continuous piece of cement. There won't be any steps or anything like that that anybody has to, you know, maneuver around.
So there is a slight increase and some amount of increase in the impervious surfaces, right, to put the walkway onto the, onto the grass?
Yes, and there'll be a cement pad. I think it's 20 by 22 cement pad.
Okay. But no trees are coming down or?
No.
Okay.
I think I could get behind this.
Yeah.
It looks like a lovely idea.
All right, good.
Should we call for a resolution?
I think we, I think we could call for a resolution at the next meeting. Seems pretty straightforward. Just to recap, you know, no plumbing or electricities being run over to the site, minimal site disturbance, limited visibility. Looks like it's got a lot of amenities that can help the staff and residents, plus the cross-cultural aspect of other community things is always nice to see, too. Good.
I think it'll be good. Thank you very much.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. He's right here.
Right.
Thank you, Mr. Diopino.
You're welcome.
Okay. Okay, next up is?
Next up is 2530 Balltown Road, Chinese Fellowship Church, application for site plan review for a 777 square foot addition. Good evening.
Good evening. I'm Keith Kramer, architect for the church, and this is Deacon Chen. Knows more about it than I do. So basically, we're putting on a small addition on the back of the building. Pretty much will not be visible except from the back parking lot. It's within the setbacks and the building lines now. And it's lower than the highest part of the building, of course. It's pretty, pretty low. There's two main buildings there, tall cathedral ceiling rooms, gym and sanctuary. So where we're attaching is a little flat spot in between those big roofs. It's going to be pretty simple. We have a little kitchen now, but it doesn't fit the need, so we're adding some more equipment in there. Couple more ranges, coolers, the mostly work area.
Yeah.
The, obviously, the additions for kitchen, right? You expecting the site usage to change as a function of the kitchen for events or anything like that, or anything different can occur?
Just for the, every Sunday of the service, we have a lunch fellowship.
Yep, yep, please.
We use that kitchen to prepare the food for the members, congregations. And then normally for the Sunday service, we have around 100 peoples to join us. For the special event, the Thanksgiving, Christmas, and the Easter, we have around 150 peoples.
Okay. One of the comments from the planning department, the agenda statement is the parking of the site plan shows. Or I believe the statement is there, I think, 64, I'm trying to find it right now, 64 spots available. And I believe the planning office did account, they come up with, I think, 59. I'm trying, trying to get that.
Go back to recount it, around the 76. So when we opened the map.
Yeah, I count, just so you know, I count it. I come up with the 64 personally, depending on how you count them, but I came up with the 64.
When I did the map, there was a few lines that I didn't think was a jet, so.
Okay.
I took a few spaces away.
Yeah. So, you know, we need to get that read submitted because the parking was deemed to be inefficient based on the square footage. And so it would require, I believe we have waiver capability here also.
Yep.
So it would require us to act on a waiver, be nice and, but be clear on how much parking there is available. And if there is a waiver required, I got a feeling that the board would support that, you know. Have you had any problems with parking for any of your events? Have you been able to?
No. So we have enough parking space. If there's over 150 peoples, we'll open the parking lot for the, to the lawns. So people can park in the car in the lawn. But it's very, very.
Right. The other thing that we usually do, if there's, if it's short of parking sometimes, we ask the applicant to say that if it gets to a situation where you do require it a parking, where would it be? So that you could show on the drawing that someday, if we do need the parking, here's where we're going to take it from. And so if you could clarify the number of spaces, and if there's a waiver for X number of spaces, at least show those on your submittal, where that would be if they were needed. Doesn't mean you have to invoke them or build them. But if it got to a situation, you or a subsequent tenant, you know, those may have to be taken out of, you know, green space maybe had to be converted to parking. And we don't like to do that. We'd rather keep the green space, of course. So that's why I think we would support that.
Thank you.
All right.
Now, would we be required to make any changes to parking at this moment?
I think you just need to clarify if there's lines missing, so that the planning office and the board here and yourselves all agree on how many parking spots there are there. It's easy to calculate how many you need, and the difference would be the waiver.
Yeah, they're called bank parking spaces. So you have to show them on the map, but you don't have to build them unless there's a problem that we see through enforcement. And then we would require for you to build them.
Excuse me, what were they called? Green parking?
Bank.
Banked, yeah.
Yeah, banked. So you have to show that you can fit them. The site's huge. You can obviously fit more parking. So you just have to decide where you would want to add more parking in the future if you had to. Show that on the map.
All right. Do we need to add these spaces up to current sizes of parking spaces?
Well, if it's, Laura can correct me if I'm wrong, but if it's pre-existing, it is what it is. But for any new ones, we'd have to, you know, be applicable with the standard. So is that, I don't even know what it is.
Yeah, no, that's the case. The only thing that is sometimes not grandfathered in is the handicap parking spaces. So sometimes when you then take the building permit out for the addition, you may end up having to make your handicap parking spaces conform. And I don't know where they're at right now, but they are sometimes not grandfathered in.
They have three, at least three on the front side.
Yes.
Yeah, the building inspector would be the one that'll actually tell you that, if you have to modify them, but.
But you can also take a look at it and look at the code or the standard and see if it's compliant.
Yeah, like, so for instance, like, you've got this handicapped one, and it shows, like, there's just, okay, that one may have the sign in front of it, and then there may be a normal parking spot right next to it. But ADA usually requires that you have, a lot of times, it'll take that parking spot right next to it and hash it out so that the doors and people can get out. So you, you might just want to check that.
So I believe the ones on the front of the building do not have that access aisle. So if we take, put an access aisle in there, then we lose another space.
But that's okay.
It's okay.
We'd rather have it right. And then have, you know, that would just change the waiver, right? So you're reworking how many parking spaces you have based on the missing lines and so on and so forth. So, you know, just, just do it right and we'll work with you. All right. So what I hear is that, you know, clarify the number of parking spaces, make the handicap parking space compliant, and then show where the banked parking would be for the parking that's missing per the requirement. If you need a hand with that, you know, well, the numbers are all pretty straightforward. It's a, one spot per 200 square foot, so it looks like, of building space. All right. So you can come up with how many are required. I believe Clark did a calculation based on what you had before, and I think with 74 spaces were required. All right. And I'm not sure how many you have. I counted 64, but let's clarify that. So if you can clarify all that information, our next meeting is May 13th, so we got, that's kind of close. That's pretty tight. I don't know if you can, you can get that in, turn that around real quick. What's the requirement there, Laura? I think they. Unless you're not in a hurry, then, you know, you could, you know, take your time and we can, we can have the resolution for the next meeting, which would be June, I'm not sure what, but sometime in June.
But we're in building season already.
I think by this Friday.
Uh, this Friday.
This Friday.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, because the meeting's coming up quick and they need to get the packet out for, for review and everything. So if you can do that and get it into the planning office by Friday, we can have a resolution. Everybody's okay with that. Granting the difference, the waiver and parking, as long as the bank parking is shown on the drawing.
Okay, so just to clarify the bank parking, is that like overflow parking? That can be on grass?
Yeah, so I mean, so what the code is letting us do is, like, I think zoning codes right now require maybe too many parking spaces. Like, it would be like you designing your parking lot to always handle Christmas crowds. But it's actually better if you don't build those parking spots for stormwater and for just general aesthetics. So it can be grass. There can be grass over, but you have to show on a map that you can fit them. If someday you're going to build them, but yeah.
Yeah. So you got to pick a spot where it would be buildable if you had to do it. We don't expect you're going to have to do it, but it's got to at least show in case something changes over there. All right? Where would you put them? All right?
Thank you.
If you can update that and get it in, and the planning department will work on a resolution for the May 13th meeting, if everybody's okay with that, right? Okay?
All right, thank you.
Beautiful. Thank you. All right. We'll move on to reports. Thank you, everybody, for hanging out with us tonight. First up is 1747 Union Street. An update on facade changes, and we have the applicant. Maybe you can state your name for the record, sir, and?
Hello, my name is Awees Ahmed at Fordire Drive, Latham, New York. I'm the contractor for 1747 Union Street. Just get here, man.
Okay.
We have a small change for the facade of the building. The fascia that we have currently is outdated. And we would like to convert the roofing into a truss roof, which would change the facade a little bit, but it'll make the building look a lot better compared to what it is now. And we have some renderings in front of us on what the building will look like afterwards.
Okay, and just for the board, was not included in the packet because this is a?
It was a report. Yep. So the architectural review board reviewed it. And there actually isn't an old picture of it, but essentially, the old picture is just a flat roof, like a flat, big roof. And this adds gables and it adds, I don't know why this won't let me zoom in very well, but it's making the text really big. It adds, like, little windows to make it more residential. And Architectural Review Board approved it and thought it was okay, so we just wanted to bring it to the planning board to show them the changes.
Okay. And this is the corner of Van Antwerp and Union Street, the market that is going to go through the?
The Rosada Mark.
Yep.
Looks like an improvement to make.
Yep, I'd say.
So the Rosada Mark is completely gone away.
Well, so the, it's getting, addition is here, right? The side of it is addition. So, but do you want to tell them your construction schedule that you were telling me?
So the reason, we came up with this change due to the old fascia that's there, we can replace with the new addition. If we replace the old fascia, it doesn't change the visibility of the building. And we would like to achieve that with this, where it would look like a newer building compared to what was done 20 years ago. As far as the fascia that's there, even if we install new fascia in 2024, it wouldn't change the physical picture of the building. With this truss roofing, we're able to achieve all the recessed lighting in the building, so we wouldn't need drop ceiling in the building anymore. As far as lighting, heating, everything would be just in the attic space. We wanted to bring this to the attention before we place orders for any of the materials and everything, because they are costly. And if it is something the town allows us to do, then we would place an order, which will take approximately three weeks in order to manufacture the trusses and then get them delivered to the property.
So, so we already have an approved project here, Laura. So is this for information only, it's strictly a building permit? And you're just asking us to take a look if we have any concerns?
Yes.
Okay.
It would have been good to see how it, how this fits into the entire lot.
I mean, it's still going to be the same size as the previous approval.
Yeah, so it doesn't change your site plan approvals at all. There's no change to the site plan approval. The buildings, the additions, all staying the same. It's just changing the roof line.
It's just the roof line?
Just the roof line. Yeah.
All right, I got it. Side note, did they ever do the development of the sidewalks and the curb cuts and?
We discussed that. So they can't go to temporary CO without doing all of those things.
Okay.
So we are just starting on the addition. We have the foundation completed, and then we paused for a couple of weeks due to this change. And once we move forward with this order placement and everything, then we would try to rush and hopefully get it done in about two months, as far as the.
Yeah, moving on to the curb cuts.
Yes.
Okay.
And one thing he discussed was if he's able to do these truss roofs, which we had to double check with the ARB, but they did think this was better. They will actually close the store down completely, and that'll allow them to, like, really go at the site. And then they don't have to worry about the customers coming in and out.
Yep.
So it will be closed completely, but it'll allow for the construction to move faster. And what were you thinking, July? You said you thought?
End of June, start of July, that's what we're thinking.
All right. And you'll probably want to get back up and running as soon as you can, so it's a good thing.
Yes. I mean, it will take a little bit of time due to the changes inside and everything, and everything getting updated as far as the inside of the building goes, with newer drink areas and coffee counters, register placement and everything. But if we are closed for that two-month period, it would obviously make more progress, where we're not dealing with customers every day. And the site would be fully fenced off, so there's nobody allowed at the property at all, except the construction guys.
Yeah, that looks like an improvement to me, so.
That includes the gas station portion also?
Yes, the whole property itself.
All right.
Yeah, you have a lot of site work to do. We talked about that.
Yes.
You know.
And it will be a much more attractive building.
Oh, yeah, we were very excited for it.
Yeah, we appreciate that.
Thank you.
It's a strategic location over there.
Actually, working on it from before, when they were in last time, the site overall does, like, so much better than it did.
Thank you.
All right, sounds like the board's okay, Laura?
All right, awesome. Thanks for looking into that.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
And we don't need any resolution or any documentation, just, just discussion. We're okay with the minutes.
Yeah, we double-checked the resolution. It actually referred the facade fully to the ARB. But we figured that if the planning board was going to see it and it looked very different, we wanted to make sure that you had reviewed it.
We appreciate that.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you so much. Have a good night.
I think it actually improves the building because flat roofs don't work real well in the Great Northeast.
Yeah, it'll look a lot better, that's for sure. All right. And next up, zoning code updates, short-term rental regulations. We had some information that's not in the package, just for the public's information regarding just some notes. And Laura, if you want to pull up?
Laura, are you planning on posting these in the?
Um, I can, yeah, I can. I haven't fully finished watching the training that I was kind of explaining to you guys. But once it's done, I can make that all, the notes, and then post that, if anybody wants to see it.
Laura, could we discuss a little bit what our process is here and what timeline we're on?
Okay, yes. So I, so code updates, they take a long time, especially zoning code updates, because they require seeker. So typically, it takes the board a month or two to come up with the code that they're comfortable with. Then they have to call a public hearing. At the same time as them working through their public hearing, it also has to go to the Conservation Advisory Council for them to review the environmental impacts of the code updates. Because it's a zoning code update, it also has to get referred disconnected to county. So while the planning board is doing the public hearing, the Conservation Advisory Council will be reviewing the environmental impacts. After the planning board holds the public hearing, the Conservation Advisory Council has to do a recommendation on the environmental impacts to the town board. The planning board has to do their recommendations to the town board. Then it goes to the town board. The town board has to hold its own public hearing on the code updates. And then code updates can be potentially adopted, like, at a minimum. And this is if everything moves fast and we're not struggling with the type of code that we're adopting. It's usually about a six-month process. Typically, when we do zoning code amendments, it takes about a year. We're gonna try to do them faster this time, cause we understand, um, the, we understand the wanting to have them done faster. But just because of all the steps involved in amending a zoning code, I, I, you know, I would say in a good scenario, it's like six months.
And Laura, what's the, what's our current practice relative to short-term rentals?
So currently, um, there's no timeframe written into our code for short-term rentals. So that we do not distinguish between short-term and long-term rentals. There's no distinguishing in our code. And so we have very little ability to regulate them in any way. Um, well, we can't. The only thing that we can do is respond to noise complaints, um, which the residents have been.
I mean, and by we there, you mean the police department?
The police department responds to the noise complaints. And you know, we do, we, if there's code violations, like standard code violations, property maintenance code violations that we can enforce upon any home, we can, we can always work on those.
Thanks, Ryan. I'm sorry. I'm just one final thing for clarification. Right now, no landlord, right? Is under any requirement to inform the town that they're actually renting, correct?
No, we don't have any code like that requiring landlords to register with us for rentals.
Yeah, there's not only registration, but any subsequent actions that would be required as part of registration, like inspections, uh, you know, certain details and that, that, that's stuff that would have to be addressed in the code. You know, if, you know, how many people are allowed per square foot or number of bathrooms or bedrooms or all those types of things, parking spaces. Um, whether there's a rule of thumb based on the, uh, geometry, uh, of the, uh, available parking or the, 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 you know, the residence or whatever that was proposed to be a short-term rental. So those would all be included in the code.
Yeah.
And then enforced.
Right. So in terms of moving forward with now addressing this in the code, and I'll come back to the this. I think our intent here is to only address short-term rentals.
Um.
Or are we actually now gonna be regulating in the code, all rentals in the town?
No, I really do not want to get involved in long-term rentals. That is not something that most towns do.
Right. But, but recognizing that if we are only gonna focus on short-term rentals, we're gonna have to define it.
Oh yes, that's huge. So in the training and the stuff that I was reading, these codes get litigated fairly regularly and the definitions are absolutely key. And not only is the definition of a short-term rental incredibly important, the definition of the, like the dwelling units that it applies to is also incredibly important. And I say dwelling units, but that's actually the term that they don't like to see. So you really want to make sure that you're specifying what you're talking about when you're talking about dwelling units. Can't be vague. Yeah. So the plan that I've been working on, and I've been talking to Rob about this. Um, we have three town attorneys. We've kind of involved all of them. One, one town attorney took a really good training that he shared with Elena and Rob and myself. Elena is going to be working on this when she gets back and Rob has been asking her. But what Rob asked me to do was put together the questions from the last meeting. So I put together the questions that we had from the last meeting. Um, I put together the resources that we have right now. And then I started to summarize, um, the training that I've been taking on regulating the short-term rentals. Um, we can regulate the short-term rentals under New York State town law. So it's good that we know what law we're using. It's town law 130, uh, 20. And, um, at the last meeting, I know Ms. Beloski was saying that she wanted to look and see what towns like us were doing, regulating, uh, code for short-term rental, not necessarily like the seasonal towns like, um, like, um, Lake Placid. But I looked in a couple of the towns that we usually use for reference and I was not able to find any, uh, short-term rental regulations yet. I was looking at Bethlehem and a couple of the other towns that we often compare ourselves to. Um, Bethlehem had some discussion like within the last five months, but they do not have a short-term rental code either. Um, but in the training that I was taking, they said, even if you are a bedroom, so big difference in regulation between seasonal communities and bedroom communities. Niskuna counts as a bedroom community, but even though we count as a bedroom community, they recommended that we still start with the North Elba code. It seems to be the gold standard. So I sent it to you guys again. Um, the, the thing they noticed, the difference between the, when you're regulating for a seasonal community, a bedroom community, uh, bedroom communities, when they were talking about, you know, the problems that bedroom communities have with short-term rentals, it was a laundry list of exactly what we've been hearing. You know, the impacts to the adjacent property from noise cars, increased use safety, increased garbage, et cetera. And, um, one of the things they noticed is that in suburban communities, these things actually stand out more than they do in places that have more of them because we have less. So I guess it's quite normal for bedroom communities to only have one or two, like we do. Like we really only have like four in all of Niskuna, but they stand out more because they aren't so usual. And I did do, I started to look at your questions and I put together the slides. But things we could either discuss tonight or take home and come back for May 13th. Is it's very important when we're formulating this code that we decide why. So the why of the code is really important. Um, I wrote down a couple of whys that I heard is to protect, protect the traditional neighborhoods and encourage the long-term living in residential neighborhoods. Reducing the impacts to adjacent properties. We haven't talked about this as much, but every research that you do for short-term rentals, this comes up all the time. That short-term rentals may be elevating home costs in, uh, communities. They make it harder for long-term rentals because people can make more money off of short-term rentals and long-term rentals. So it drives the cost up for long-term rentals and long-term rentals tend to be a type of affordable housing in a community. So you're losing that affordable housing in your community. And it also drives up the cost, not probably as much in Niskuna as some other places. Um, when they start to like prospect on the homes. And then it's hard for, uh, you know, a regular family to buy a home when somebody can buy it and rent it and make more money off. So it drives up the cost of the home. So it's important, I think, for the regulations to try and address the affordability of housing for both ownership and long-term renting in Niskuna. And then this one wasn't in there, but we've heard it, like, we really need to make sure we've got a reasonable ratio of beds to guests with no parties or events. It's already outlawed, but I think it should be in our code.
Yeah, Laura, I think you didn't say, but I think you, you implied it is that it's also housing availability, right? If everybody consumes the homes for short-term rentals, there's less housing available. And as you, we all know, prices of homes are going up and availability has gone down. So.
Yeah. So housing availability is directly tied to housing cost. Cause the less availability, the higher the cost. But yeah, I think we should directly write that in there.
And there's a concern that having these short-term rentals in your neighborhood actually diminishes the value of your home, a single-family home.
Yeah, I didn't see that, but I'm not saying that that's not true.
It's a concern. I don't know if it's documented, but it's a concern. And just generally it goes to the stability and peacefulness and harmony of the neighborhood. If you've got a bunch of strangers in and out constantly.
Yeah. And so there's obviously like what we discussed before, North Elba's code's kind of broken into two parts. There's the permitting of the single, of the short-term rentals. That's pretty standard across all codes. Some towns just stop at the permitting. They just say, once we've got the permitting, we're checking for safety. Um, the registration fee covers some of the negative impacts to the town and that's used to mitigate those impacts. Um, but other towns go beyond the permit. So you have the permitting process seems to be standard. You're gonna have to do a permitting process. It's the only way to enforce. And then after that, the question is what would be the mechanism or other things that you want to regulate? I know we had some comments on this and, um, I copied the slide. I honestly didn't get a chance to listen to it yet, um, fully, cause I keep rewinding and re-listening. But according to the planning agency for our capital district, who I, um, who I look to for support on planning fairly regularly. Um, we can do such things as parking limits, occupancy limits, zone-specific regulations, annual rental day cap. And stuff like that. So all, and another thing is, okay, so permitting, regular use or special use, all of those things are things that we can discuss.
Right. Laura, just one mundane question. The training that you mentioned you're currently taking?
Oh, I put the link in there for you guys.
Yes. Is it that capital district regional planning commission? Training? So there was a 2023 version, but you're currently taking a 2024 version?
No, I'm taking the 2023.
Okay. So you're just repeating back the webinar?
Yeah. Did you watch that one?
No, I didn't.
Okay.
Hmm. No, I don't think I did.
Yeah. It's from last year, but I mean, it's September of last year. I think it's still really good.
I mean, it says spring, but.
Oh, it's from spring?
That's what's written here. Not.
Sorry. It's from spring of last year. I thought it was their fall.
It's okay. Yeah.
So the, we don't have the ability to outright restrict it, correct? As a, as a use, we've talked about that before. But we do have the ability to approve it in a specific zone if we chose to, correct?
Correct. But like Leslie had mentioned to me at the beginning, we want to be careful that whatever we choose is not like, for instance, not like ban it in R1, but not ban it in R2.
Correct.
Yeah.
But.
Because actually the impact would be felt more in R2 where the houses are closer together. And where the driveways tend to be smaller and all of that.
Agreed. But there could be a zone where we take a look at it, that if it was placed in that zone, there would be minimal impact to.
You mean like R3?
I'm just saying, if you, you can look at there, there, if you go through the plan, there are specific uses that are in specific zones only. So you can't put commercial in certain zones, you know, there's always a workaround, but is that something that would be worth exploring?
Yeah, we can definitely explore that. I just want to be careful that we don't shove everything into R3 because multifamily apartments have in my mind is equal a weight a single-family home. So we don't want to just push everything to.
I mean.
But there has been a lot of fairly short-term rental in some of the apartment complexes.
So that's, you know, and I was actually doing a lot of research on New York City. New York City, totally different beast, but how did their regulation work? And they're mostly, you know, renters are subletting to Airbnb. So the renters are coming into, and they were really saying like, do not downplay the fact that if you have an apartment building, an apartment building can be a tight-knit community too. And if there's a, you know, there's actually somebody walking down a hallway now that you don't know. So just be careful and sensitive to R3.
And I would tell you that some of our apartment complexes are pretty tight-knit. And others have been much more fluid. And they have been renting units for travel medical professionals who come for maybe a three-month stay.
Yeah. Well, this standard.
Again, it's not, it's not the come have your big party weekend here. It's, it's relatively short-term, but it's still not a weekend or two, you know?
The general definition for short-term across most codes is 30 days of renting or less. So three months would not qualify as short-term rent. Typically.
David, to address the question that you had about whether or not you could have it only in certain zones, which they are three. So, so far there's surprisingly little litigation on this. And part of it is because there's lots of municipalities like ours that don't have an ordinance yet.
Right.
Um, so the litigation that you see is out of places like New York City where it's not like apples to apples. So when we're looking at what you can and can't do, it's applying general zoning principles as opposed to like litigation in this exact area.
This is true.
So for general zoning principles, it's the stuff we all think about, right? It's gotta, you, you've gotta have, and if it gets challenged, you'd be able to show that it's not arbitrary and capricious, right? So it's, there's gotta be some real basis for why you think it's more appropriate for that zone than from a different zone. So to the extent that you can differentiate R3 or apartments or bigger lots, whatever it is. You know, you have to, you know, to, to create a record that will withstand scrutiny.
That's why the why is so important.
Yep. So I'm staring at the why as I work.
Yeah. They, they said multiple times, make sure you've got your why figured out.
So, so is it, is it worth it to, um, I mean, you, I think you touched a little bit on what definition of short-term can be, right? Uh, maybe as a board, process-wise, you've listed Laura, four whys, right?
Yeah. Three of them I took from the presentation and one of them I took from the neighbors.
I mean, because what I'm hoping is that if we kind of get a little exhaustive on the whys, maybe that will begin to point in a direction to what kind of zones we would need to mostly have these whys satisfied, right? I'm gonna say that a little carefully.
Or like, maybe it's allowable in all residential zones, but we say, cause I just, I am very, I just want to be very careful about like picking one residential zone over the other in an equitable way. I think that'd be very hard. But if our why is, this is what we're trying to make work, then maybe the, the more of it is some of the, you know, the occupancy limits and stuff like that.
Yeah. I mean, let's be point blank. So if you said highway commercial is the only area that they're allowed in, that could be problematic.
Yeah.
Because there's probably not a lot of residential homes in a highway commercial zoning district.
And. Yeah. So the issue about like defining the, the why first really is only helpful if you then create legislation or based on your whys, right? You can't create your, pick, this is what we want to do and then go back and justify it in reverse, right? So, um, it, the process will be better and the result will be better if you think about the why first.
Yep. Yeah. Um, so, so I'm sorry. I'm gonna, I'm gonna go ignorant for a moment. Why is it that we can't outright prohibit it?
Um, so that's actually back to general zoning law.
Okay.
You're not allowed to ban use. You have to, I mean, we have an adult use in the town of Niskuna. You can't outright ban it.
Right. But you gotta put it, you gotta put it in a, in a raid zone.
Well, yes, but I mean, nah, not really. You, you could. There is a place in the town of Niskuna where you could put a business like that, right? But, um, it's not very well developed.
Right. Yeah.
And providing the infrastructure would probably make it, well, unaffordable.
I'm just saying, like, you can't. The zoning code, when it's challenged over and over again, if you outright ban something, it tends to lose.
I, I mean, if, if you look at why number one, that's written here, which you said you extracted from the, from the training, right? The key word there for me is residential neighborhoods.
Yeah. So protecting the long-term living and so, and so protect traditional neighborhoods and encourage long-term living in residential neighborhoods.
So, so wouldn't that lead directly to eliminate short-term rentals from R1, R2 and R3?
I put the link in there so you guys can watch this, but one of the things also that I was reading and Leslie kind of brought this up is I believe that New York City actually requires, or no, you know what? When I was looking for the regulations for the town of Bethlehem, I was in the city of Bethlehem, which I'm not even sure what state that is. And they had this huge thing and enacted a code. Yeah, Pennsylvania, I think that is where it is. And they required that, that won't all live in the house. And you could only have two bedrooms rented. That's what they ended up enacting and because they found.
Yeah.
Yeah, that, um, because what Leslie had mentioned too, and this comes like some of the arguments against regulating are that people use the, the income stream from the short-term rentals to make improvements to their home and improvements to their home add value to the neighborhood. And so there's some benefit to the community from an income stream that helps increase, you know, uh, adding additions and beautifying your home. Um, but I think a lot of that comes from you actually living in the home and only renting it for a certain amount of time too.
But you could essentially ban it that way.
You what?
You could essentially ban it that way. I mean, if you, if all of a sudden you institute that stipulation that you must have the person, you know, just what you said, person occupying the property and only can rent out two rooms. What are the chances that we're going to see that? I mean, I don't know. I, I, I'm asking.
It's not a ban. It's not a ban.
But if you, if, if you go from this down to this. What it does do is you don't buy the house with no intent to live there and simply the intent to rent it out, which makes it a commercial use in my mind, not a residential use. And, and I agree. I'm just saying if that might be, I mean, if that's something that we would consider. If, if it's something that we want to try not to get involved with, I can't imagine a better way to do it than that. That seems like the most reasonable thing to say. And as you said, these people are bettering their homes. They're making improvements or what have you. They are able to address any noise going on. What are the chances that that's actually gonna happen in a two-bedroom rental?
Yeah. So I think that's why the city did that for Niski. Yeah, so I think that's why the city did that for Niskiuna. And Leslie brought this up though, we have never allowed you to rent a portion of your home. A single family, except for accessory home care units, yes.
We have, I'm not sure that, I don't know when we stopped allowing it. I remember when I was in high school, one of my teachers rented a room or two from. A homeowner, she benefited from the extra income. He benefited from having. A place that he didn't have to sign a long term lease because he did not have teaching credentials in this state. So his contract was short term for a year.
Respectfully though, Leslie, yeah, I think that actually happens today, but it isn't permitted in our code.
I don't think we had a ban.
I don't know.
I don't think it was the only one, I think it was allowed. And it was certainly beneficial.
Maybe prior to nineteen seventy one possibly, but.
So it's not allowed right now.
That would be the right timeframe.
The major zoning. The major zoning code update that we had in seventy one is not.
This would predate it.
Okay, so but typically Niskiuna has taken a very hard line that a single family home is a single family home and you cannot rent a room. Unless it's for an accessory home care unit.
That's the kind of thing that allows some seniors to stay in their homes.
Um, that is one of the things that does come up from that, yes, it is. And it's it's something that they've also been talking about with, um, you know, accessory home care units. Our accessory home care unit code is pretty burdensome on the people that are trying to do accessory home care.
To revert when the person for whom.
And also they have to be attached to the house, you can't have detached accessory home care units in the town of Niskiuna, which also when I was looking. When they were redoing their, when they were adopting short term rental codes, they also lessen their restrictions on accessory home care units. To try and balance, um, two things that were happening with affordability of housing. Which we know, we don't hear that much about in Niskiuna, but we know generally speaking that New York Shire of housing units and affordable housing is an issue.
I hear about affordable housing in Niskiuna. I hear from young people who would like to get homes and can't afford them. Because our base price is pretty high. And everybody says, well, old Niskiuna, well, old Niskiuna isn't as affordable as it used to be.
I think it's, I was gonna say, I think it's interesting concept though about having the owner, you know, reside in there. Because, you know, then with the neighbors, they know the owner, right? And and the police or whoever, if there is an issue, you know. They they should be aware of it because they're there, first of all, and and then you got to point a contact, no trying to work through Airbnb.
You know, again, I'm really looking into these four whys, right? And so that direct, right, when we talk about a traditional neighborhood. It's a neighborhood in which the owner of the home lives in the home.
And if you have the owner vetting the person, the renter upfront. I think you get a very different result than if you've got a third party who doesn't even have a bona fide presence in the community. So I like that kind of approach.
So we have to allow it before we can regulate it.
It is allowed right now.
It's totally allowed and it's totally unregulated.
All rental in the town of Niskiuna.
Yeah, so Laura, you know, from here, I know you, as you mentioned, it's a, it's an extensive timeline because of the amount of. Boards that are involved in, you know, making recommendations and getting this onto the town board. Is it best, you know, I'm not sure what your planning department's thought is, but you could take the Lake Placid co- code to North Elba, which seems to be a pretty good one.
That's what they said to start with.
Do we just take it and put town in this unit and clean it up? Uh, you know, you guys take a first cut and just start working on it, is that the way to to address it?
That's my recommendation, what do you think, Rob?
Yeah, so it it's always nice to have a starting point, right? Like it's easier to cut stuff out than recreate stuff from scratch or create stuff from scratch. When the issue is, will it be cohesive when we're done?
Yeah.
And then if it's not, then we may have to draft something that we like better.
Right, and and I think along those lines, Rob, and Laura, thank you very much for sending these these two things out, I feel. You you know, given given that we're looking at this, this is going to be the right time for this kind of momentum. I know it's going to be important to me, based on what you said, Rob, to to extract the whys. From known trainings or known publications or known experience. Make sure that we're, you know, um, um, affirming the same whys for our town. And then whatever it is, we end up leaving, changing in the town of Elba code. Make sure that they have that traceability to the whys, right? For me, the important thing here is to create a rational, defensible. Right, code text that fulfills the objectives of, right, what our whys are. And also allows for people to have some degree of freedom in what it is that they do with their properties.
That's the balance.
Right.
Can I just, I'm just, I don't mean to, you know, belabor the point, but if this were to be something that we would. And and I'm narrowing it down to what we were speaking about in terms of renting the rooms. Who's to police that the owner's actually there?
Yeah, so I mean, that's why I put that in your thing, because I've, I find it to be very relevant. I mean, one of the biggest issues that short term rentals have is on small towns like ours. Is the, um, yeah, is the regu- is code enforcement is the regulation entity. Um, and it can be overwhelming to the regulatory agency, which is the the uh, building code officers. I do not know exactly how this works, but one of the things that CDR PC recommended is that. When you license them and you take the fee, you can actually hire a consultant. To you take that fee, because you're never really allowed to take, make profit, right? We're not a profiting town, but you can take that fee and use it to offset the cost of. The monitoring and the compliance. I don't know though, because we've never done anything like that, that was something I only heard just very recently. But is, they do have to recognize the burden that it puts on, um, the code enforcement officers.
Uh, yeah, I mean, it's a catch twenty two, right? You you never want to generate that amount of fees. Because it meant that there's a lot of this stuff go, a lot of the short term rentals going on. To be able to support the consultant or a or or a department in the long term.
Yeah, and in this case, I mean, we don't have very many of them, so that may not be the case.
Right, yeah.
But.
But we got burden, have some burden now, right, because it's a undesirable situation, so if we have the regulations in place, it'll make it at least enforceable, you know?
Yeah, I mean, I think, I think we do have to look at enforcement, but I'm seeing that as maybe a. Don't take this one, I'm saying the wrong way. In terms of what we're going to look at first, second or third, I think it's actually at a lower priority.
Well, what I want to do, which is what I keep bringing up to you guys, is that what we do, it should make sense for enforcement. Like if we adopt a code that says.
It should make sense for.
You gotta have, you can only have three cars there, then then what? I mean, what are, how are we get, I mean, is the town board then going to say, okay. Code enforcement officers are allowed to work on the week weekends and emergency dispatchers will dispatch them to check the number of cars. All of that stuff would have to be worked out.
It's, it'll have to make sense.
And you have to keep in mind that some families have more than three cars to begin with.
Yeah, it can be tricky.
Yeah, it can be hard.
But we have similar things, we've got home occupation use regulations. And the enforcement is largely when somebody, when a neighbor gets upset enough to make a complaint.
Yeah, it is.
The ADUs are supposed to convert back once the person for whom it was established is no longer using it. I don't know how that works.
I mean, we can go down the rabbit hole, the accessory home care units, they actually are supposed to have something recorded, which then gets lifted. So I, they're not a great, um, standard to look at.
I don't know how many we actually have in town, I know we've had some. I don't know how often they actually come in and tell us that's what they're doing.
Yeah, I think the main thing is that we know upfront that enforcement's going to be an issue. Except I think Mr. Khan makes a good point, which is, let's, let's keep that in mind. But let's not design our ordinance about around something that's easy to enforce, right? We could have something terrible that's easy to enforce. The idea is to have something that's enforceable, but we still want it to achieve what we want.
Keeps the character of the name, yeah, the permit is easy to enforce, boom, done, end of the day, you go home, you can do that from nine to five. But I think everybody here thinks, and I agree, that we got to go a little farther than just a permit, so. So that's when we got to figuring out those next steps.
We need to be reasonable, but have something that can be enforceable. And be enforced and something that actually helps protect the neighborhoods.
Is is the idea of limiting the number of permits per zone an option?
I didn't look at that one specifically, a cap on how many you have.
That's not a form of banning, right, it's just a restriction of of permit allowance.
Yeah.
Short answer is, I don't know the answer to that because that sort of gives a preference for the first person to apply, which doesn't seem fair.
Yeah, it would be interesting if they're all in the same neighborhood too.
I think, I I I think maybe we leave a cap as a last resort.
So what's the next steps, Laura, I mean, um, I know there's some questions, uh, Mr. Hess or the other attorneys will, you know, formally look at those.
Well, okay, so let's talk about that for a second. So as Laura mentioned, like I have to figure out what my role is going to be, so. My role now is different than it used to be when I was town attorney or deputy town attorney, when I was paid a flat rate. They sort of called me to do what they needed done. Now I'm called in as outside counsel, so I'm hourly, so I don't know if this is my gig or not. But that's something that the town attorney's office can work out, to make sure you've got good answers. But along those lines, what I would say is email the questions to Laura so that we have a record of what you guys want to know. Because that's easy to answer questions, right? The issue is then how do we first get the right answer and then separately. Does that cause us to, the answer to that question mean we're going to deviate from the model code that we're. Changing, whether it's the town of North Elba or some other code, um, so. Sending questions to the town attorney's office through Laura or directly to Elena is always going to be good. Because there's stuff we're going to want to take into account.
Yeah, so I did list the ones I heard from the last meeting, but if you have more, just add them in there.
Yeah, but but I do think process wise. Be- because you've done a good job, Laura, in documenting the previous questions, I know if you have more, we'll bring it. I think it is worthwhile for us to go through an exercise of, let's say, take North Elba.
And start.
Go through it.
So I wanted to comment on the permit cap. Where I was going with that, and I'm not saying I recommend it, I was trying to come up with some combination of the things we've discussed, this is a takeaway. For you guys to think about, but what if we had, what if we allowed so many permits and you held the permit for only a year or eighteen months? And then you need to relinquish the permit, that forces the owner to be the owner and not make it just commercial. And then it frees up the house, maybe that house, the person does it for a year and a half and then they say. I lost my permit, I'm going to put the market, I'm going to put it back on the market.
Or move in.
Or I'm going to move in. Make it a permanent home. So I haven't seen an example of that, but I was thinking something like that might be a combination of rent the room, keep the owner involved. But have a finite time period, which forces the house back in the market or ownership.
Yeah, I mean, I I I hear what you're saying, Chris, but I think, I think something along the lines of if we define short term rental as less than thirty nights. Right? And then, and then putting in a condition that the owner must reside in the property. It protects people who own a house and want to rent it long term, with which people don't have complaints about, right? So I'm 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 kind of tending in that direction. The key there being residential nature of the neighborhood, right? The key word there being residential.
Yeah, and then, and then then those owners that are going to reside within the property now become accessory buildings. People putting permits in for other areas, like a little area for the homeowner.
Yeah, that's going to be the consequence of that.
You're going to do it regardless.
Okay, yeah.
The consequence, once we allow for room rental, like truly allow it and start, um, permitting it.
So we'll have a- agreed, but by the same token, we have another very, what I would say, rigorous process. For accessory structures on property.
True.
Right, so they would, it it it's not going to be a cakewalk in the park.
True.
Yeah, and accessory home care units are long term, so they're not going to fall under their short term rentals. Accessory home care units hopefully are in place for a very long time, the longer the better. Well, I guess it depends on the situation.
And here thing for the public, you know, this is an open discussion, this is board discussion at this point in the meeting, but if you have any thoughts, something we've missed, you know. Uh, you can either come to the privilege of the floor and let us know, or send a, uh, send an email to Laura, you know, with your question or a suggestion. And and then she can share that with the board. So I'm sure there's other people that have different thoughts and then than we have here, we always listen, so, alright. Uh, it's it's, this is at the portion of the meeting where we're done with open discussion, so that's why I brought that up, so. Uh, I want you to draft an email and send it to Laura, and then she'll share it with the board, or come, uh, May thirteenth to the privilege of the floor and and go on the record with your suggestions, okay?
This, for today, we can share our feelings with you all, because we're being brought.
I get into the discussion of what, you know, what's the situation is now, we're working on the resolution and working, working on a, you know, changes to the zoning code. So if you have any suggestions, when you hear us talk, we're we'll always listen. And so you can either communicate with Laura, the email, and she'll share with the board, or speak at privilege of the floor, if you're future meeting, appreciate that, okay? Yep, I understand.
And and we're, we're following a legal process. Right.
And that's why I brought that up, because I, I know that people, and we don't know it all, so if you have any suggestions, you might be a eureka out there that would help us all.
Right, but we need to be procedural about it, and Chairman Walsh did point out what are the ways the public can actually.
But we're being penalized.
Okay, well, we're not trying to do that, you know that, so. Alright, so we're not going to have any further discussion on this, but you go right, open right now, okay, thank you. You know, we're working on it. Alright, alright, so it sounds like we'll get some answers to questions and, uh. We'll use, uh, North Elba at least as a a model and make sure that, uh, we do a good job on it so that there's, um, it's not. It's not messy, so that it works for us.
Yes, I'm envisioning May thirteenth is a long meeting where we, uh, roll up our sleeves and strike an ad to North Elba.
Yep, so.
Right?
Yeah, we start going through it, just in the next couple of weeks, and we can provide, uh, comments, uh, in advance, hopefully. For the meeting to, that we can share.
I mean, for whatever it's worth, when I look at this from a ten thousand foot view, and I actually did look, look over again, the North Elba, I think. Concepts of defining a short term, concepts of owner residing in the property. Some limitation on the amount of square footage, rooms, whatever it is, that get right. In addition to a registration, a fee, et cetera, I think those are the key elements, they seem to fulfill the whys. They can go equally across R one, R two, R three.
The parking, you know.
Right? Yeah, I mean, the parking stuff is a little more dubious to me, but, um. You know, at the end of the day, parking mostly reflects something that a neighbor would complain about or. Right, you know, so to me, that gets a little bit to the enforcement one, but I I think there's elements that we could put together here that could be fair. I mean, the philosophy of, you you know, the philosophy of short term rentals. Enacted through, you know, I'm not going to list the names, right, but you know who they are. It was fundamentally for this, right, owner residing in the home, and this is your quote unquote side hustle. It, right, the other construct of a person buying an income property and renting that property out. Typically for a long term rental, right, that was a well known existing construct. You know, from, from, from past time. So I see wrapping our restrictions around. The true definition of what these different companies were brought into into existence about as being what we should be in line with.
I just want to make that, so I'm from Long Island and this is a huge issue. So this is a huge issue on Long Island, so the primary owner sometimes helps, but a lot of times it doesn't. Because depending on the size of your house, you can go get a cheap, you know, studio apartment and rent your house out. For triple what you, you know, what you're paying in your mortgage, depending if you even have a mortgage. And a lot of the houses on Long Island, depending on their proximity to a beach, they will just go get a studio apartment, pay a couple a hundred dollars. And then every weekend have their house booked, so I don't, sometimes the primary, being the primary owner, unless someone's going to make sure that they're there. Every weekend, it's not really that helpful in my experience. Because this is an issue that my parents are dealing with, they're longtime owners and all of the houses around them are now Airbnbs.
Yeah, but 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 I would hope then that when we get to that lower part, we think about enforcement. That whether it's from the neighbors or some other way, it becomes known that, you know, hey, owners just aren't there.
They adopted, um, a short term rental code in that town.
Long Island, they regulate everything, even rental, long term rentals, everything has to be approved by the town.
So, because in the research that I was doing, it said, if you're not a beach community, you're not a beach community. And Long Island has a lot of beach communities. So, but it may be worth looking because they're also kind of bedroom communities too.
Some of them are very much, yeah.
I mean, I wouldn't, although they're beach communities, I feel like they're not as seasonal as the mud.
People call them beach communities. Like sometimes you're like thirty minutes. Like I wouldn't, to me, that's not, you know, you're not going to walk out your house and go to the beach, but they just call it that because they're somewhere on Long Island. But all rentals, um, are regulated and they're supposed to be approved. A lot of them are not. Um, a lot of them are primary owners who rent in the city. And then they come and, you know, especially like after, um, Memorial Day, it's like all bets are off. So everyone's just, they're the primary owner, but they're not actually there. Or they've, or they, or they've inherited a house from their parents and their parents are still the primary owners and they're not there.
Okay. So we'll have to, maybe we'll look at some Long Island codes too. Yeah. I didn't think to look in Long Island, actually.
What city was it also?
Um, um, all of, so there's, um, Shirley, which is by, um, Mastic Beach, not Mastic Beach, I'm sorry. It's Shirley, but it's right next to the beach. My brain is, it's late and my brain is foggy.
I don't like, I know I've used, I don't.
But this is a town of Brookhaven. Town of Brookhaven has.
Brookhaven? Cause I know I've used Islip. I don't even know where that is on.
There's no, hmm, there's no beach near Islip.
Okay. But I've actually used them as, for example, regulations before because they had some good regulations.
Yeah. All of Long Island, they, because they're not allowed, because of their water table, they regulate all rentals because they had an issue with basement rentals. So all rentals are supposed to be, yeah. So all their rentals are regulated.
Okay.
Thank you.
So maybe we look at them to see what enforcement is.
Yeah. Let's see how that works too.
They could be a contributor to the enforcement.
Okay. Anything else on the subject right now tonight? Anybody?
I, I feel we have a direction forward.
Okay. All right. All right. And finally, for tonight, uh, projects in middle timelines.
So I, I didn't have anything formal, except I just wanted to see what you guys thought of the Wednesday slash then Friday packet. Did you like it?
Yep.
Yeah. Does it give you enough time to at least glance over it and see if there's any? I know Nancy had a change that she made and I didn't actually make it into it.
Well, there was over days.
Anything is helpful. And, uh, I think that's what, one of the points of having a project lead. That makes it more functional because you have a project lead. You know, my view is that project lead will at least focus on their project and get back to you, even if you don't have time to look at everything.
Everything.
At least look at the one thing, you know?
And now project lead, I'm willing to get the information whenever you want to send it earlier is fine too.
Sometimes Clark does send it earlier. That was the first time we'd done the draft, did the whole draft packet on Wednesday.
And again, Laura, I'd recommend, um, in the spirit of the public meeting, we have to post the two, the code and the training.
That, yeah. I, a lot of times I would have. I just didn't really have it ready until Wednesday.
No, 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 no. That's fine. I mean, as long as it gets there eventually, I think it's, um.
Yep.
And I'm curious if this process is helpful too.
Um, I mean, as long as we push the timelines back, it's not terribly different to me to do it on a Wednesday versus a Friday. Yeah.
And then you're guaranteed feedback a little sooner.
Yeah.
Yeah. But I think, so let's comment on that. Or I, I don't think you want to get into a habit of doing it Wednesday and Friday, right?
Right. It would just be if there were small changes between Wednesday and Friday, mostly to like the resolutions and things like that.
Yeah. I mean, the main, the main thing is to actually reduce the burden on the planning department. And if it ends up, we get into a habit of now edits get made between Wednesday and Friday, right? That's I think a little more burdensome.
Well, I think Wednesday is the time for us to respond, not wait till Friday.
Yeah. I think the, the whole point of Wednesday was, oh, go ahead, David.
I was going to say the, the response would be you're reading the resolution or the agenda statement and that's what's clarified. It's not the additional information that keeps disseminating in.
Agreed. Yeah. I mean.
Yeah. So we don't want any different information to come in between Wednesday and Friday.
Correct.
Just if you see something that you thought we missed or you read the conditions of the resolution and you're like, um.
Right. We talked about striping. We didn't see the striping plan added by the applicant. That might be something you send back to say, okay, maybe this gets tabled or
Yeah, I agree.
From a resolution discussion.
I mean, I hear, I hear what the team's saying on this, but it creates a new practice that potentially has the planning department issuing a draft on Wednesday and issuing a final on Friday.
The signed package actually for Price Shepherd was different. Cause they removed the boar's head sign.
We just want to be a little wary of that. I mean, we've been, the main intent of limiting it was so people, so that applicants got their information in time. Right? And so we didn't have to go into meetings where, oh, I just submitted it this morning, right?
Yep.
Yeah.
The secondary one is the burden on the planning.
Yeah. Have time to look at it.
Yeah. Okay. Well, let's try it again. We'll try and do Wednesday for the May thirteenth meeting. We've got more resolutions for that meeting too.
Um, commission business? Anybody have any questions, comments?
Any training opportunities coming up?
Um, I mean, I feel like there should be.
Yeah. There's been some emails for that CDP, uh, there's been different webinars and lunchtime training stuff.
There has been some lunchtime.
I, I haven't had any recently. The last one I did have, I could.
Okay. I'll see what I can find and I'll send them to.
Maybe I'll just look on their site and see if they've got.
Maybe we need to use a short-term rental.
Well, I was going to say, if you guys want to watch the hour-long short-term rental regulation, that'll count. Tell me you watched it for an hour and then you're down to three.
Exactly.
Already did it.
And that'd be very.
I think you did it too.
I think I did it twice, actually.
Yeah. I mean.
Two different years.
Very good. Good training.
Right.
And that kind of encouraged me to have a.
And I, I know Mr. Hess might not be up to date, but Laura, hear anything, uh, from like the Miller brothers on Balltown Road? Is it still in the courts?
Still in the courts.
Wow. Been a while.
Actually, sorry, one other question related. Is the town board aware of the short-term rental? Like, do people come to the?
Yeah, they can't, they actually went to the town board. Mm-hmm. Yeah. I think that, um.
Went to town board and spoke.
Yeah. And so is there a thought in the town board? It's anything different from what the process and path that we're on?
I think that they are grateful for the planning board to review code and come up with something. And then they, you know, I think we should keep them in the loop. I don't know if you noticed, but I actually copied them on my notes. Um, just so that they're in the loop with what we're looking at and it's, nothing is a surprise to them, but I definitely think that they want us to look at it and see what makes the most sense. And then that's kind of a starting point for them.
Yeah.
Yep. And obviously the public hearings is something we missed. I'm sure the public will let us know.
Yeah. And I mean.
Which is good.
For whatever, we're setting the expectation of the public is correct in terms of six months or whatever that neighborhood is going to be. But it doesn't necessarily mean that we move slowly, right? We could actually.
It's, I mean, that would be pretty impressive for us. I mean, I put together a schedule. If we do it, it'll be really impressive.
Yes. It's tough.
They were immediate relief. I don't think there's any feasible way for us to provide that.
Oh, yeah. No, no, no. Definitely not. I mean, clearly not immediate, right? But, I mean.
I totally understand their frustration though.
It's just, it's, um, I mean, it's a hard thing to create a code that will work and do what's intended and has good why and it takes, it takes a lot. It's a process.
Yep.
And we'd like something that's legal and enforceable and defensible and all of that stuff.
Anything else? Okay. Got a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Mr. Diopino, motion to adjourn. Have a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Strang. All favor. Hi.
Hi.
Thank you very much. Good meeting tonight. Appreciate everybody's time.